Anybody who'd like to speak, please make sure that you've signed in in the back. Call the order?
Here.
Here?
Here.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance. I believe Mr. Chad Schaefer is here today from Duke Energy, who I'm going to ask to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, newly elected member of Madeira City Council.
The United States of America, for the Republic, which is France, one nation under God, in this ball.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, public presentations and actions. We have a representative, as mentioned, here with us tonight from Duke Energy. If you'd like to come up and talk to us a little bit, welcome.
Thank you so much, Chad.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So thanks for having us out this evening, greatly appreciate it. I'm Chad Schaefer, Government Community Relations Manager with Duke Energy, and I have here with me Brian York. He's our Stakeholder Engagement Manager, and we are here to provide an update on the Duke Energy Locust Corner Road Full Replacement Project. Andrew Cassett, who's our project manager, who was at a previous meeting, since his regrets tonight, he cannot be here. He had a family obligation to attend to. And I'm pleased to report this evening that our crews are making good progress in the field, and we thank the community here for the continued patience that you've had with us as this critical work is completed. As stated in prior updates, this full replacement project is designed to upgrade critical infrastructure to our utilities through installation of new poles and conductor, which enhances service reliability for all of our customers. Notably, two of the four total segments of this project have now been completed, including a segment from 558 Locust Corner to 782 Locust Corner, and the segment from 782 Locust Corner to the intersection of Locust Corner and Wagner Road. And as of today, our contractor is still on track to be completed with the final two phases of this project in the mid-December timeframe. That's also weather dependent. We can never predict that that weather, right? So I just want to put that caveat out there. The third and fourth segments of this intersection, which are being worked currently from the intersection of Wagner and Locust Corner Road, and from 1017 Locust Corner Road in Merwin 10 Mile, respectively, are now 25% completed. So at this stage, all but seven poles are actually set in the field. The remaining utility poles will be set, that are to be set, are located at the convergence of Wagner, Locust Corner, and Bayhinder. Next week, crews will start pulling conductor, moving up and down the road with the standard single lane impact, which we've had for pretty much all of the project. Our project team anticipates one additional road closure will be needed in a week or so to begin pulling the conductor across the road at the intersection of Wagner, Locust Corner, and Bayhinder. This closure will be communicated to the township, county, and fire department as a road closure with advance notice, as agreed upon, once a date is determined. We have reinforced our requirements with both the project and the traffic control contractor to be sure that they are followed. Additionally, next Tuesday, at 9:00 AM, Duke Energy has coordinated an outage for the communications tower as part of this project. Follow-up with the county and first responder agencies is currently being made by our contractor oversight and project management to ensure that all parties are on board before this moves forward. The hours of construction will all remain the same. Traffic control still includes two sets of flaggers, which are four per crew. Traffic control measures will be the same for the upper segments as they were for the past segments, and these upper segments will be past the firehouse to 10 Mile. Signs are being updated regularly to ensure that the correct information is also provided. Traffic control will continue to call dispatch daily to inform them of where the lane closure is for the emergency services. So Brian and I, we have to get any questions you may have about the project. And please keep in mind that we may need to connect with our project manager if there's more specific detail needed on the project. But again, we really appreciate the community and your patience. These, the infrastructure obviously spans, you know, quite a few miles, and when you get out here, it's a main thoroughfare through the township. So we realize there's an impact. So we're committed to help reduce that impact as best we can, mitigate the impact for our customers in our communities here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Just briefly, so we've had conversations, I've also spoken with Rhonda Whitaker-Hurt at Duke Energy, and you know, the ladybug, good luck, I guess. So our main concern obviously is the safety of our residents, and that includes their ability to access critical, you know, fire EMS and police services. So, you know, the concerns that have been raised by our citizens and our safety services personnel are valid. And, you know, we were disappointed in the communication, naturally, breakdown that occurred, and hopeful with the comments that you made, the exchange I had with Ms. Whitaker-Hurt, that this will probably be the end of that. But ultimately, you know, we are responsible for assuring the safety of our citizens, and that's job one here. And we appreciate your cooperation and hope that this won't happen again. Thank you for coming tonight with the explanation.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. And just so you know, Duke Energy is very committed to safety, and I think Chief will attest to any meeting we start with, we start with our safety and end with our safety. So our expectation of our contractors is that they abide by, you know, the conditions that we provided them. So we've addressed that, and we feel that it will be corrected moving forward. Thank you.
We have a question for, well, my colleagues may have some.
Sure, sure.
My, well, the trustees.
Okay. You mentioned that going to be closing the corner. You talked about the three roads, you said, way into Locust Corner, being the inference wall, that you are closing that corner. That was the inference that I had.
Yes, of those three roads, it will be likely a week or so, but there will be forty-eight hours of notice. Township, so that information will be pushed out.
But you do understand that the school buses come up there, they can go way around this way, it's always good to school. All the schools, all the, the whole master curators come up there.
Sure, sure.
Sometimes they back up to the end corner down here, they'll tell you how many there are, and they come up to you there, and you go and close that corner. For days or whatever.
But it should be back. So I will call to the project manager and make sure that, you know, the schools are notified as well, so they can plan alternate programs.
Buses go up from the school, they go down, maybe they go down.
Okay, okay. Which pool are we talking about? My score is usually, yeah, gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
And I must add, the people that have been working have been very cool, have been very good handling the traffic around them and stuff like that. Good, but that would be annoying.
Sure, sure. We understand it's high impact, so we want to try to get the work completed safely and in its position, so you can hang, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chad, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Okay, Chief Broxterman?
Good evening. So I request a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Michael Urban to the full-time sworn position of police officer, effective November 26, 2023, at step four of the current labor agreement, which is $40.95 hourly. Mr. Urban fills in addition to the police department's complement, which was approved by the trustees at the December 28, 2022 trustee meeting. A little bit about Michael Urban. He's 28 years old. He comes to us from Brown County Sheriff's Office. He has also served with the Mount Orville Police Department in the Claremont County Sheriff's Office. Lives in Winchester, Ohio, which is about 30 minutes from here, with his wife Julia, who's here, and his son, 18-month-old son Mason. Michael is an avid outdoors person. He enjoys hunting and fishing. He also enjoys spending time with his family. We are very excited to have Michael with our department. And again, his first day with us will be November 26 of 2023. So, Dr. Kimbellois, if you will do the honors?
Well, this is truly an honor for me. I was in when I got the chance to do this, but that many times, but nevertheless, we're active.
Thank you.
Okay, so repeat after me. I, Michael Urban.
I, Michael.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I would support the Constitution and laws.
That I would support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances.
Of the political subdivisions for which I'm appointed.
Of the political subdivision of which I'm.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my ability.
Will discharge the duties of this office.
Will discharge the duties of this office.
Thank you.
We charged them.
Well, that's a mighty long drive from Winchester, but having been out there many times, I can tell you that's a beautiful country out that way. So I'm from Maysville, across the river, originally. So I've been out there many times. It's beautiful country, beautiful country. Glad to have you. Thank you. Okay. Public comment, open floor discussion. Once again, if you have, if you want to speak, make sure that you've been signed in, and that when you come up to the podium, that you tell us your name so that everybody can hear, plus your street address. Okay? Yes, sir. Come on up. Did we do that?
Nope, they need to call for it.
Okay. Chief, you called for the motion, so we have to vote on your motion. Okay? Okay, do we have a motion?
Salute. Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We got so excited about welcoming this wonderful officer that we got carried away there and forgot that.
I was actually thinking about voting no, so that we could have cake twice.
Oh, there's cake. Oh, okay, terrific. Now we can go to public comment, open floor discussion.
Do I say, I should say, I have a question? Stan Shavel. Yeah, thanks, right, okay. Stan Shavel, let's be, let's be wrong. There was an item in here, a motion to approve resolution correcting the recorded minutes, but of a meeting dated the 12th of July. That's four months ago. Can you explain to me how you can correct, you can't correct minutes? Because the minutes were done and you guys approved them. I don't understand. Is there a legal precept, concept for doing this?
Yes.
There is?
Yeah.
So you can go back and change minutes?
By resolution, yes.
By a resolution? It doesn't say what the problem was? It doesn't say what the error in the minutes was? It's just?
The resolution is specific to that.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say it here. Didn't say it here, it just said.
We're gonna read.
In the minutes.
We're gonna read the full text when it's time.
Okay.
Of the motion.
Okay, that doesn't give us a chance to look at it. I went back and looked at the minutes of that night, and I didn't see anything extraordinarily weird in there, so I wonder what the.
And we're not changing the minutes, but we're not changing what was actually. And we're not changing the minutes, but we're not changing what was actually said. We're just making a minor correction. It's a procedural issue.
Okay.
The 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 meeting, the meetings are recorded, as you know, so we want to make sure that what we record on paper is consistent with what was said at the meeting. So really, that's all this is, is just making sure that those two jive with one another. So the meetings are of record, that we're not changing anything, uh, the substance or the the context of 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 what was uh, motion. We just want to make it a nice and neat for the record going forward.
And is there an explanation why it took four months?
Um, I I wish I had a good explanation for that, but all I can say is that, you know, we moved as quickly as we could to make this correction.
Okay, well, listen to it when it comes out.
Okay.
Can we put up, when it comes, can Eddie run up the original minutes that so we can see, actually physically see what the problem is?
I don't know that we're prepared to do that on demand tonight, but we can take that offline and answer any questions for anyone who has, you know, further interest in looking at those details.
Okay.
All right. Thank you again.
Steve Taylor, twenty eight, forty nine, Pond Run Road. Um, I wanted to start off by saying, I I would ask that you wait until I finish before you ask questions and that I speak only for myself. We've asked for help with a specific neighbor hunting on our property starting in nineteen ninety six, which is where this problem originates. Uh, the constant shooting, the building without permits, destruction or clearing of our property. In which we've just found more. We now have to pay a surveyor to come in to prove where our lines are. Um, and that, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but I imagine you are, Mr. Freeman. There's, it's a long, arduous process. We may win or we may not. It's not lost on me listening here. We try and come to as many meetings as we can. That when you guys have problems near you, they get resolved quickly and they're expediently. Things move fast. We don't feel like that has happened with our case. And I understand this is really far away from you and you don't, you don't have to live with it. But you're here for us, right? So we were told the last time I spoke, and I try not to speak, to be honest with you. That we didn't want to look like bullies. Let me explain a little bit about a bully. A bully tells everyone that'll listen that I, or more specifically, my wife is the problem. And that doesn't fly with me. A bully starts shooting at five fifty five AM on a Sunday morning with no no recourse, really. A bully keeps building when he's told to stop. A bully shoots so close to people that they can hear the bullet go by him. A bully shoots the buildings on other people's property. And a bully lies about hunting coyotes so he can shoot at night over a hundred times, closer to probably a hundred and fifty. But that's when we stopped, Kevin. We've tried to be nice and we've tried not to push, knowing things move slowly. First, we were told to call nine one one when the shooting started, then we were told, don't call nine one one because all it does is really tick him off. Then we were told to kind of rally our neighbors and all that's really accomplished is we get notes put in our mailbox, taped to our mailbox, notes on Facebook, notes like that. And we're tired of the experiments and we're tired of trying new things. We're tired of waiting while he does whatever he wants. And eventually has his judge just say, you better stop that or don't do that again, or no, no, no. What it boils down to is I want action. I think it's time. I want a noise ordinance that has teeth and I want to know the requirements for building for everyone, not just for me, not just for somebody else, for everyone, what the rules are so we can all play by the rules. And then, then I want to know the repercussions. I don't want to hear, well, we'll take that into consideration. No, if it's going to be fair for everyone, then the rules have to stand for everyone. And on top of all of that, it doesn't have to be tonight, but very, very soon. I want a timeframe when this is going to happen. And I think it's only fair since I paid part of yourself. Thank you.
But thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate those comments. Um, I'll just make a briefly. From the perspective of the noise ordinance, Chief and I have been in a discussion. Uh, Chief is going to have some ideas to bring up this evening that uh, uh, I'll defer to him. Uh, he's got the detail there, but I think you'll be pleased with some of his suggestions. And I do think that there are, um, well, we'll talk about it in some more detail, but I'll let him allude to the details shortly in his report, but um, I I certainly, I live in your neighborhood, obviously, as you know, and I'm not deaf to what's happening. You know, I was awakened on Saturday night between ten and ten thirty myself for with repeated gunfire coming from just the opposite and beside your property. And I know it wasn't you shooting. So I don't appreciate, you know, being awakened either at between ten and ten thirty at night when I'm sound asleep, nor do I appreciate being awakened at four AM and I have been. You know, I work long, hard hours and I expect that my neighbors will respect that and allow me to get some sleep. So I think what what you might hear is, you know, you know, some concern and I I, there is some validity to this, that is property rights and and there is that that argument to be made, but once there's an imposition or an impingement upon the neighborhood, the the quiet and peaceful enjoyment uh, that we, to which we're all entitled, then it becomes a bigger issue than that, in my view, because it is disrupting uh, the quality of your life, the quality of everyone's life in the neighborhood. So we're going to talk about that some more in detail as far as a noise ordinance goes. But um, you know, your, your concerns and the neighbors' concerns, I've heard them not only from you, but also from multiple other neighbors as well. And it's the same story over and over again. So you're not um, saying anything that's out of line. I hear the same thing over and over and over again. And and you're right, you know, we we really haven't, we've our, I don't want to say our approach has been anemic to it. I think, you know, we've really worked to to look into this and to try and solve it. But I think it is past the point where, um, you know, we can be anemic and I think we're going to move it a little bit more uh, forward, more aggressively forward.
Mark and Lucas Corner Road. Just so you know, Chief, we are having BLTs and macaroni and cheese when we leave tonight. You're not invited. Just so that's, we get that clear, okay? I think you've been begging. It's it's a little, it's not your style. Okay, anyhow, uh, I'd like to get clarification on a couple of things that came up at last week's meeting, one of them being the contract for the forensic accounting party or firm. Can you lend some clarification or shed some light on what's going on? Is there a contract, multiple contracts, amended contract? Do we even have a contract? What's the status of the contract? So please help me understand.
So we did have a contract with Flagel Huber and Flake Flagle. Did I get that right? Um, we have a contract. Uh, they have provided us with the report of their findings. Uh, and we will be considering the details of that uh, in the days to come. They have fulfilled uh, to the best of my understanding, their contractual obligation.
Do I have to make a public request, public records request to see that or is that going to be made?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to our legal counsel on that.
It's not a public record at this time because it contains security information that if released to the public would make the township vulnerable to cybersecurity attacks and other things because it is a review of our forensic uh, protection and audits in place. So at this time, it is not available to the public to inspection.
Because it could pose a threat to, or si- another cyber attack? Is that what you're saying or?
That's a part of it, yes.
So to to clear it up a little bit, it was not a cyber attack with the township. The township never suffered a cyber attack. The township never suffered any kind of cybersecurity issue. There was no cybersecurity issue.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say cybersecurity.
No, I just wanted to clear that up with, it was an accounting focused audit. That's what it was.
I understand.
Based on account.
I understand.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
We paid seventy five hundred dollars in taxpayer money for that report and we don't get to look at it, which seems to me like, um, why couldn't we do that in a so nobody at the township can look at it? Is that what you're saying? Nobody, no, no residents allowed to look at that report?
That's, that's not.
The trustees, the trustees are.
Yes, it was provided to the board of trustees.
I don't get that. I, I don't get that.
It's a, it's an internal.
Was that in the contract?
It's an internal report, Mark, at the moment, because if you're gonna look at accounting practices and things that are um, potentially have vulnerabilities from a fraud perspective, then you don't want to broadcast that to any, everybody that could. So we need some time. It's not that it's never going to get made uh, public per se. We just don't know. We we can't, uh, we have to, we only got the report two days ago. We we need some time to process the report. It's been advised to us by the this middle of the report, there there could be security risks within the report. Um, if we were to just, you know, broadcast that all over. You know, you don't want to go out and uh, you know, write up where your, where your key's hidden under the mat at your house, right? So until we have time to move the key or whatever, I'm all for making it public. I'm I'm, you know, I have no you know, issue with that whatsoever, but I don't want to create any kind of vulnerabilities within the township either.
Well, I think it should, it should be, you know, looked at and, you know, evaluated as to, you know, what kind of threats there could be in the report. So I'm not asking it to be made public now, but I would certainly like at some point in time, if it's deemed appropriate to be able to look at that report to see what kind of deficiencies we might have. And that brings up my next question or recommendation. Why don't we have the state come down doing all of our of our financial financial practices to see if they can lend some light to what happened? Because we sure don't want this to happen again. We get scammed out of ninety thousand dollars. You know, we don't want that to happen again. So I'm for, you know, fresh eyes, all eyes, more eyes, as many ideas as we can get to look at our practices to say, did we do something wrong? Or are we just a victim of, you know, a scam like everybody else in the world seems to be a potential victim for?
That's been discussed and Mrs. Schwan might be able to speak to that a little bit. Uh, there was how often are we audited by the, by the um, the auditors? They don't, every two years? Okay, so, so there's an audit coming up.
When? In twenty twenty four. Would there be any harm doing it early? My, my only suggestion is, I mean, if we have a vulnerable, if there's something vulnerable now that we need to be aware of, then maybe we ought to have them come down. I mean, you know, look, the state is the one that grades us on our performance, okay? I know you always do. I know, I know you always do. But, you know, more eyes on this. I don't see any harm in having more eyes on it as soon as possible, given the circumstances.
Well, it's so close to the end of the year now, so they'll be notified by the first part of the year to for us to compile our stuff and then it should be about half of the year.
All right. Well, I hope we're not vulnerable. Anything happens during that time, so. Okay, uh, next item is, are there any new discoveries on associated cost or work regarding the grow in Locust Corner park projects? We came up with a hundred fifty thousand dollars in new stuff that we didn't know about last time, so or time before last, whenever it was. We got new costs?
You mean above and beyond what's already been disclosed? Uh, Mr. Williams, uh, is there anything that um, is outstanding beyond, beyond what we've already disclosed?
Uh, there is not at this point. Everything that was included in that uh, final uh, Proust contract has just about been completed. There are a couple of small items that we're having discussions with Proust over um, to make sure they fulfill what we felt like was part of the contract, but uh, for the most part, it's ninety eight percent complete.
Thank you.
So given a hundred fifty thousand dollars there and the ninety thousand, which we recovered fifty thousand on from insurance, that leaves it with forty thousand on top of the one fifty, we're approximately two hundred thousand dollars in the hole on the scan and the park project, all related, of course. Okay. So my question is, what are we going to do to recover that two hundred thousand dollars?
So um, some of that we can't really discuss in this forum because of the potential, uh, because of potential impending uh, legal issues. So with all due respect, in order to not further jeopardize the township's position, um, and therefore potentially spend more taxpayer money unnecessarily, then that's uh, probably not something we can discuss in any great detail. Correct me if I'm wrong, counselor?
No, you're correct.
Are there actions being taken?
The matter is that the matters.
Discussions being held? Has there contact been made with Logan's Creek and Flying Jers and says, hey, guys, you know, you need to pony up some money here because you screwed us out of, you know, ninety thousand, so.
The town.
Are discussions taking place? Actions being taken?
Yes, sir. The township is actively, your leadership is actively involved in that process.
Okay.
The only thing I would correct you on, Mark, and I I do, I do love correcting you, Mark, is that the
Big boy, I can.
I know, I know, I know. The ninety thousand dollars you just described is mischaracterized. We were not scammed out of ninety thousand dollars. Work was done for ninety thousand dollars. It was Logan Creek that got scammed out of ninety thousand dollars. I would argue we have no responsibility to Logan Creek to secure that ninety thousand dollars. So you could take that piece out of your calculations.
So we did not, I thought we cut a check for ninety thousand dollars and that went overseas somewhere. Am I incorrect?
Correct, but that, it was Logan Creek that had the cyber attack. I can go that far.
Our money. What, wasn't it our money?
Yeah, it was our money, but work was done and completed and we were paying a bill. We paid that bill. Unfortunately, Logan Creek did not receive that bill. It's not on us to to deal with. In my view, it's on Logan Creek to deal with that, not us.
So the ninety thousand was not township funds?
It was township.
It was township funds, but it didn't get to the receiver.
Correct. They, it was a bill to be paid to Logan Creek. Logan Creek had done work.
And they better not be pressing us for their ninety thousand dollars.
That's my view.
Where the pending litigation comes.
Yeah, could I politely interrupt?
Let's make sure, of course, we're, you know.
Let's make sure that.
Have our own position on that, but we have to work through that legal process.
May I politely interrupt you? Uh, we don't want to go too far with this, uh, Mr. Cam, because, you know, we are in the process, there's potential litigation here. So again, so it's not to jeopardize the the township's position.
But we haven't. We we we're right where we are allowed to be.
Just want to be sure.
We're, we're good. All right, good. Look forward to your resolution.
Thank you again.
That's okay. Good evening. Rob McClellan, thirty seven, thirty five, Willow Way Court. Um, I I as well was going to ask on the uh, the Flagler and Huber Consulting Company. It was the last time I think we spoke, you were gonna get back to me on there was my questions on project oversight and where was the deliverable, but it sounds like it has been delivered. One of my questions was, I know that there was the retainment fee that John had mentioned was seventy five hundred, but I also saw in the contract that there was hourly rates and other things associated in there as far as other potential charges. Were there any other charges over that seventy five hundred? Or was it a flat seventy five hundred?
It is not my knowledge that we've been charged more than that, but Mr. Williams, are you aware of any other charges beyond that fee at this point? It is not my knowledge that we've been charged more than that, but Mr. Williams, are you aware of any other charges beyond that fee at this point?
They've not indicated that there were any additional charges, um, we're waiting for their bill at this point, but uh um, they were supposed to let us know if there was any charges that would exceed that seventy five hundred dollar retainer as part of the contract.
My concern was because probably around the same age, I'm guessing that myself, um, uh, I was with the city municipality for a number of years during Y two K and everything, and Y two K was an open checkbook. Retainers like that were put forth and IT companies were charging us like you wouldn't believe because of the unknown on the other end.
That is not our agreement with them.
Because it, it did have that they, there was an hour that they could, they could tag you with hourly rates that was in the contract.
So that would be some.
You don't know, we've seen that yet, so we don't know if there's other fees that are coming in on top.
They haven't made, they haven't made us aware of any other fees, is what Mr. Williams stated, and we're still waiting on their bill, that's all the information we have right now. But they haven't made us aware of any other. That's fine, I just.
We, that may not be the final bill, so I wasn't trying.
We haven't gotten a final bill yet.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, there was also, um, and this goes back to some things that I had brought up. Um, in the last meeting, I, I had mentioned that there was a, seemed to have been a scope change, and I think Nick, you were, you corrected me and said there wasn't any scope change, it was the cybersecurity part was not even in the original. But looking through the document that was provided to me, it wasn't that original, so I wanted to just get that corrected, that it was part of the original, but that was removed. But in the original, that's what was approved by this committee. When you got, you all motioned on that. And then after it was removed after the fact, did you guys bring that back up again to? Put, put, put it to a motion?
Here's the deal, tonight we gotta make a clarification of the minutes because at that meeting, it was discussed about the scope of the work and the concern about an IT problem within the township based on this fraud was brought up by one of the trustees. And the original contract, it was not my um anticipation and understanding that an accounting firm was going to be doing a broad overarching IT audit of the entire township's IT systems. Uh, it was brought up that maybe we should do that at the meeting. Uh, ultimately, and I've listened to the, to the audio on it, and that's hence the correction of the minutes tonight. Uh, what was discussed was that um, two out of the three board members uh felt like that at that point, it was prudent to go ahead and move forward with the IT or with the um, with the accounting audit. Um, you know, based off the assumption that I'm sure the scope is simply for uh, you know, accounting, uh, basically IT maybe only in the parochial sense of looking at it through an accounting lens, right? Because it's an account firm. So we approved the contract as it was that evening. The minutes were not reflective of that, uh, they were not reflective of what was discussed and what was approved, so we have to come back and we do have to correct those minutes, but what was discussed and what was approved was the contract from Flagel Huber. And it's my understanding that there was a, a clarification made after that meeting because of a discussion during that meeting about broadening the scope of IT, which by the way, was said multiple times during that meeting, that we can always go back later, we can always broaden the scope of IT, you know, look, you know, as far as reach goes without, but we'd have to, you know, enter in, we'd have to find somebody to do that later, and we were all open to that, but it was never discussed that they were gonna do a broad IT audit within the Flagel Huber and Flagel. So that, just to be sure that everybody was on the same page with Flagel and Huber based off our legal counsel with whom we consulted before we did any of this. Uh, it was advised that this is simply a clarification based off the discussion and concerns that uh it was only a, an accounting based uh audit. It was only for accounting, it was only for financials, it was not a broad IT audit. So that's where the, the correction of the minutes comes in, and that's.
Yeah, I was just asking you, because I, I've sat through other count, city council meetings, and anytime they change the scope of something, it, it usually goes back up for motion, it just didn't seem to follow that process.
Yeah, after, after consulting with our legal counsel and the fact that the original contract was from an accounting firm for an accounting audit, uh, it was determined that was a clarification needed, uh, perhaps, but not a, you know, change the scope of work or a major change of the scope, if I correct on that. So, we did our due diligence before we moved on any of it.
I think where the confusion comes in, Nick, is, is that on that night, there was a motion that the public saw. And there was an anticipation that that was the scope of work that we were approving. And then we came back and changed it, and it's probably, I mean, I'm, I'm not questioning whether or not that's doable, but it was changed and there was a, a change order from what issue, amendment addendum. And so that, I think, is where some of this confusion has, has sprung up from, which is, you know, we said we're, we're voting on one scope of work and yet we signed a.
So what was the, what was the scope of work that we're voting on that was different, in what way was it different from the original contract?
Well, I can read it to you, the original scope was um, FHF will also provide a review of the township's IT systems for the purpose of identifying security weaknesses and deficiencies, B, recommendations for policies and procedures to safeguard township assets from cyber threats, and C, staff training either directly or referrals to available programs. That was amended to, FHF will also provide a review of township IT, township's IT systems as it pertains to the accounting systems and processes for the purpose of A, identifying accounting controls, weaknesses and deficiencies, B, making recommendations of policies and procedures to safeguard the township assets from fraud or malfeasance, and C, providing recommended, providing slash recommending related staff training, so all the cyber pieces were stripped out.
And that, that was also, if I may add, because that, that's the same section that I isolated too, but it was also uh confirmed by the accounting firm that that was part of the scope, and that was on, that email was on July twelfth.
But I think they were general with the IT and then they got more specific about it being accounting focused, so uh, my understanding, that's a clarification, I mean, and uh, uh, we relied on legal counsel for that. So we moved according, well, you welcomed your, your opinion, but Katie, you can weigh in if you'd like, because that's where.
So I mean, I gave you guys legal advice that I don't, I don't get that.
Right, okay.
But, but Nick, you and I agreed during the last meeting that I could, that if that were held to its original scope, that would have been huge, that bill would have been twenty thousand dollars, I think, is what you would. The number you threw out there when we were discussing this, when I brought this up the last meeting, you said it would have been a lot more expensive.
If an, if, if an accounting firm were to broaden out and do a large scope IT audit of our entire township?
You're hearing me, you're not hearing.
I don't think you're hearing me, really.
Not, but, but what, what you would, what we both agreed on, that, that price tag would have been a lot more if the IT, the, the security portion was in there. So it was in the original scope of work and it was taken out.
It, it was, it was assumed that an out, that an IT firm is gonna do IT, uh, an IT book based off the parochialness of an accounting firm. Uh, uh, I think it's a bit uh absurd to think that they're gonna do an all out uh, IT audit of everything within the township, so we simply clarified because that, you know, absurdity persisted during the meeting and we had to clarify it afterward.
I understand in the meeting, but I'm talking about in the scope of work that the accounting firm provided.
We, we went off based off our legal counsel's advice and what was uh, you know, what, the fact that we uh approved an accounting firm to do an accounting audit that was desperately needed to township in regards to a, a pertinent issue with fraud, and we felt it necessary to move and do an accounting audit. Uh, and, and any IT um aspect of that within accounting.
Was removed from the scope.
No, it wasn't removed, it was clarified, and I'm not gonna, I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna continue to, to just beat that horse on this, we can agree to disagree.
No, it says right here, within our scope of engagement, there's, that's the wording from the consulting firm. That's what you guys signed. Those aren't my words.
So, okay. Oops, sorry, okay, uh, I, I, I think I, I agree with Mr. Kelly, I think at this point, it's beating a dead horse. So I think with, once we have an opportunity to fully digest the report that was given to us, we'll be in a better position to have some, to explain a little bit about what was recommended based on what's allowed in the future, um, after we discuss and um digest that report. So I, I think at this point, it's getting um past the point where we should discuss this any further, and I thank you for your comments. Was there anything else, sir, that you wanted to bring up to us? I appreciate your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before the board? Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to departmental updates, uh, Chief Brockerman.
Well, I know we have uh some residents from on rhyme here. Um, so I wanted to invite um, a wildlife officer from OBNR come speak about uh, hunting on, on private property and so forth. Uh, every county in Ohio has a wildlife officer. Ours not available right now. So I invited uh Mark Schimmel from Augles County to come down and briefly talk about uh hunting on uh private property. Uh, he's gonna provide an overview of Ohio's coyote hunting regulations and um shed some light and, and take some questions uh before you travel back up north, okay?
So Mark, uh, tell your state chief. Good evening, everybody, good evening, audience, council.
Hello, good evening.
Uh, as Chief mentioned, my name is Mark Schimmel, I'm the county wildlife officer assigned to Augles County. Uh, you might ask, you know, why am I two and a half hours south of here? Um, Claremont County Officer is unavailable, uh, you guys will be receiving one out of this next academy. Um, so I guess in short, to give you guys an explanation, for anybody that's familiar with Augles County, it's kind of flat and farmland. You guys down south are much more heavily wooded and deer hunting, of course, is more prominent down this way, so I'm doing a three day stint down here. I was in Claremont County, I appreciate the invite. I understand if there's some uh some frustrations um amongst several of you in the room, hopefully I can give you some, I guess, some insider laws as to coyote hunting. I understand that has came up in the past uh, that the gentleman has, has kinda mentioned uh him being out coyote hunting, so. With that, I just want to give you some overviews, there are uh, there are all our laws that govern coyotes here in Ohio. Many of you, I'm not, I'm not telling you anything, coyotes are kind of our apex predator here in Ohio. We have some black bears that kind of tend to roam through from Kentucky, but generally speaking, the coyote's kind of the top of the food chain. And from the O D N R Division of Wildlife standpoint, we want to kind of keep those numbers at bay or in check uh, to prevent livestock predation uh, et cetera, so. Where I'm going at uh with coyote hunting, the regulations that we have that are enacted are pretty lenient. They're not near as strict as, say, deer hunting. They're not near as strict as, say, wild turkey hunting. Um, and I'm gonna give you kind of a brief overview here. So coyote season, there is no closed season per se, it's open year round. Um, the bag limit, meaning how many individual coyotes one sportsman or woman could take, it's unlimited, there's no bag limit. Uh, for instance, wild turkey, you're allowed one bearded turkey in the spring of the year, that's uh, that's not necessarily applicable to coyotes, again, we're trying to keep them at, uh, at bay and in check. Legal coyote hunting hours, there are no closed hours. Coyotes are nocturnal predominantly, so um it's growing in popularity, I would call it stationary predator hunting, where sportsmen and women go out, they use a, a uh, a light or even a thermal scope, they have a electronic collar, and they will oftentimes use animal distress sounds to what will then lure in coyotes from that neighboring area. Um, there is somewhat of a caveat to that, though. Um, the exemption is during any of Ohio's deer gun season. So youth deer gun season that's coming up, November eighteenth and nineteenth. The week long deer gun season, I think it's November twenty seventh through December third. The deer gun weekend, the bonus weekend, I believe is December seventeenth and eighteenth. And then muzzleloader season, the first part of January, those hours are restricted, you can only hunt coyotes during the day. Um, so you cannot, you cannot be out during the nighttime pursuing coyotes. You would be restricted from one half hour before sunrise to one half hour after sunset. Uh, legal coyote hunting implements, again, guys, this is pretty liberal. Um, you could use artillery equipment, you could use a handgun of any caliber, you could use a rifle of any caliber, or you could utilize a shotgun, ten gauge or smaller, and even an airgun. So there are no restrictions on firearms or calibers. There is, again, a caveat to that section, if it's during any gun firearm season here in Ohio, you're restricted to what would be applicable during that, that deer gun firearm season. So we don't have a high powered season here or high powered rifle season here in Ohio, so you could not utilize that during any open deer firearms. Uh, license requirement, there is a annual hunting license that would be required unless you are under a landowner exemption, meaning you could hunt on your property uh without any type of license, and that would be extended to the landowner themselves, their spouse and immediate children. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
Did, did you indicate, I think there, isn't there a, a state uh regulation on um the earliest time you can hunt in the state of Ohio?
So not for coyote season, there is not, there's no closed season, it's open.
No, I'm talking about time of day that, that you can begin shooting a gun.
Yes, that's species specific, so for instance, whitetail deer season, the legal hunting hours would be one half hour before sunrise to one half hour after sunset.
So that'd be, what, about seven thirty in the morning?
Yeah, it's gonna vary, you know, depending on the time of year, but yes, give or take.
So conveniently, if you're hunting coyotes, you could do it at five o'clock in the morning?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's, if it's not a deer gun firearm season.
So that kind of seems like it should follow that anything you shoot at, anytime you discharge a firearm, it should be seven thirty in the morning. Coyotes just get up earlier?
Well, they're nocturnal, so.
I'm not picking on you.
Yes, no, I understand, I understand. Um, I get your, I certainly get your point.
Yeah, there's a lot of hands went up there.
If I understand it, coyotes hunt alone typically?
They can.
Uh, sometimes it bears. So it makes a question, why, why does it turn, we're approaching brownouts within about anywhere from twenty to forty minutes of almost not opportunity to hunt. Could we hours a little more, a little more silent or, you know, tell them?
Yes. Now, who understands, clearly the guys, I come and act out, maybe once a night, they're hard stationary predator hunting, but you'd be wanting to, maybe, to. How do we understand that?
Do we handle the budgets, coyotes and coyote count?
Oh, yeah.
You said there's obviously there's the the law allows when it comes to coyotes moving hunting. But you said there are more expert at times when you cannot hunt coyotes. Could a person be hunting coyotes very major at times, one or a few?
Yes, so somebody's out, you know, nine times a hour, it will be there, it could be pretty much a half hour, it runs that all the way through the night, it's about, it's sunrise, it falls during any one of Ohio's deer gun seasons that are allowed. The reason, the reason that uh, that law wasn't active, it's kind of a tool for us, all that law's actually where it's only you're doing, right? So we're trying to get, one, we're starting to break from the onslaught of deer hunts. And two, we're trying to take away that that excuse if you will, saying, um, you're not, are you, are you, are you still a student here after hours? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, my question, there is no. If there is a buyer, who do we call, and how do we get them from us?
Yeah, um, so you can certainly all, my, my notion, it's a twenty four seven, I, I, we call it, and that. It gives whatever information you might have. And it's, it, it only if that, that, that county possibly to see that, that one, that, that train would be mad, to pursue, to pursue the form of trials.
What can I ask, then, what can?
So if we are coming back to legal hours, which is only has some legal hours because they're hunting, they're gonna tell me very worse for the, for those hours.
So it was, I think, the, the, I guess, just a point, yeah. So it was fine, but if you're going to, yes, so far, yeah.
There is a, if then uh, then you want to find?
Yes, these are repeated by, um, that can be, again, can be heightened. There's certain statutes, the laws that uh, of kind of this fact, we need to look. So what is the label? Somebody violating the same law certain times. You know, after that, there will be someone, the, the entity is heightened, yes.
So we, we call one hundred culture, do you guys respond to that? Or do we call chief or who, who can we, that's the grass proof level here? In that case, and who, you know, follows up?
Yes, if you consider the call, it's, we're putting on the scale, so we're going to try to, this is a better switch than the hand, so anything around now. Uh, I'm always trying to remember kind of lacking, uh, so that I don't have to be down here. Um, but we're liable on recent talks for.
Right, right, yes. So I'm calling for each county that belongs.
Yes, eighty eight county officer, there's one third. That most, you know, most sad.
Yes.
So, uh, when does the hunting season of deer start then? And straight down?
Yeah, very question. So your earthquake season began in the last week of December.
So that's uh, she killing the pandas?
No, I'm not saying anybody. It's been here on.
Okay, so is it only get the season of that?
Yes. Uh, so it will start here for the year nine week, which is November twenty eighth. And we're having a week long here down the city, which runs one hundred and twenty seven, there's a clear. Uh, we, we continue on what we call deer gun season again. Thirty percent of the side being the eighteen. If you're monitoring the season, you're wearing six to be known.
November, uh, January, January.
Now, any of the one most specific days.
Always that is.
Always, always there for you, could be a whole. I've got some current uh, radio videos that I have in the vision, that would be helpful. Um. Chief.
So I, I want to thank Mark for coming down to live off to us tonight. And uh, so that was a noise resolution in front of the Capitol. And I mean, to start off by stating, I'm empathetic to the problem that we're having because I would have. Uh, numerous gunshots every week. And I'm waiting out to, we're on here late at night or early in the morning. So I understand the pain you're going through. So I submitted a report to the miscreants are uh, township in December. On some recommendations uh, uh, we might look at. They will be reviewed by K Barrier or legal data. And we'll have to talk with the Claremont County Prosecutor as well. Okay, but um, you know, I look at several townships within Ohio. From Madison Township, uh, Monquada, the Deerfield Township, Ainsfield, the Brunswick. And I found two townships uh, in Ohio that kind of amended their noise resolution. And believe me, there's townships throughout Ohio that have the same frustrations if you do, right? So it's not humane to uh, hear the township. But what I found that we can take a look at is the amount, the distance that a noise would be unreasonable. If, if, if the tailors could hear a noise from two hundred feet away or one hundred feet away. That would give perhaps more teeth, teeth of resolution. The other thing that I've found in a couple of other townships is they have a primipati period of time every day. Where um. The unnecessary noise would be primipati unlawful during that period of time. Say midnight to six A M or kind of certain days in the week. You know, but that's something that, you know, coming uh, weeks per so that uh, sways. And this part of the air, how we talk about. And we will have uh, extensions to go to Claremont County Prosecutor, we want to do with. The time danger one of people, the miscreants and two of our resolution. I will tell you also, we talked about the capability of uh, having a meeting for one on one with uh. This uh, this police witness, the wife of uh. The gentleman Alan Puckerman, and I had a gentleman reach out to me within the past day. And we have a meeting scheduled, we live on the whole US, but consider. And he, um, this way is, and myself are going to have a meeting next Wednesday at seven, you know. Try to have a discussion on reaching some reasonable grounds. For this to, to, uh, right. So, you know, my job is a peacekeeper. And uh, so I'm trying everything I can to bring parties together to have an evaluation. To see if we can go uh, back out, but certainly uh, we will take a look at our noise resolution. We're coming uh, week or two, to see what we can do to perhaps give an added bias to that.
Yes, I, I just want to say, I really appreciate you getting involved in this. And I know it's the last thing in the world that you want to mess with us, but uh, it is a problem. And the only thing I would say to the proximity uh, of all that you were looking at. Down where we live, it's a valley surrounded by this. And it just kind of is all the way happening, like there are people at the top looking here. Uh, the gunshot, so two hundred feet, a hundred feet or something like that. It's not going to mean a whole lot. I might give you something to look at, but.
So in my previous line, we had noise meters back where we measured festival levels and everything else. But it had to be, the thing that always is, if we're going to put it right, it would just sort of pop, yeah, right? The other problem that I didn't mention yet was if we, if we do have this noise resolution, we give it added strength. The danger is that we have a gentleman with forty acres of uh, land. And to go onto that property for our officers to go up onto that property, be into the wooded area. You know, that creates danger to our officers to find out, we have to determine who the trigger holders. Because this gentleman instead is combining other people to the property for two parts. So it may not be the gentleman in question to make any one of these tracks. And to write a violation, we have to determine who's firing whether. So it creates a, a very serious threat for us to go onto that property. Especially in the evening hour, early morning hours, and try and find who is firing the weapon. So we've got to take that into account too. So again, there's certain things that we need to look in that, how we can do that investigation without going deep into the woods of that property. But uh, how do we keep the other? Okay, okay.
Is, is there a limitation on how close to the chase we probably do to the sky fire?
For hunting, uh.
Well, if I'm sensible at one, uh, coyotes, long, yeah. You know, night or whatever, um, you know, how, what am I that to?
And I think Mark would agree on, you can't fire across the roadway. You can endanger the life of someone else. I mean, yes, there's a little bit near distance, you have to make name of uh, of the residence or, you know, as well as what anything you say happen, maybe. We need to injure person, probably the, she probably everybody.
So whether it be putting man in the house against door, by intruding, that would survive.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, but I'm saying wood, let's kind of see, get out of the woods, like a box. Yeah, okay, even though I didn't enjoy the problem.
Yes, if you don't worry about it, you must, that coyote, whenever she has a little heart, yes. Yeah.
One other thing I want to add is, um, and I, I agree with what you're saying, what it boils down to is, I don't, I don't. Want anybody to go to jail, I'm going to get fined, but just again, one good neighbor. And that would be, it would be your discretion at that point. What has to happen, because even in places that have real strict noise levels. And if they go to a house that uh, parents are Florida and the kids are having a party. They, they don't always round all those kids up and shove them in jars.
Yeah.
They tell them to turn down the stereo.
Yeah, and you know, the noise we're going to be setting has a threat, it gives a lot of examples, right? Uh, parking lot, loud stereo, town hall. But when it comes to cheating firearms, that's a whole different area, it is, right? So we do have some discretion and, and again, we have to look at township as a whole, right? And we understand the problems that climb around this head. But I think the trustees would agree that we have to look at township as a whole. And how does any amount to the resolution affect everyone in the township here? Thank you, Mark. Thanks, guys. And just throw a quick last bit out, we have a reservation, nobody that wants to do this. Hey, Mark, can you just want to throw down a table outside?
Okay.
Man, I appreciate it.
Mark, thanks for coming all the way down from up north. We appreciate it. Have a safe trip home. You bet. Thank you so much. So Chief brought up some very good points. I think he's done his homework on this. And I think there's some momentum there. And he brought up a good point towards the end that I'll amplify it. You know, uh, the Pierce Township of today is not the Pierce Township of thirty years ago. This is suburban township at this point. This is Anderson Far. You know, this is not Monroe Township, it's not Ohio Township. Those are much more rural areas. And perhaps, you know, different, you know, situ, there are different situations there. Uh, but this is, you know, becoming a more densely populated urban township. And so with that, you know, in mind, I think as we move forward and craft potential legislation. That that's going to be, I think, on the, on the platter of the trustees to consider. Chief, thank you. Was there anything else? Okay.
Chief, um, you, you did mention that a gentleman you're going to meet with later, he did send an email. Do, do you think that'd be helpful to enter that into our minutes? Um, the, the email that we received? Put it up record.
Yeah, for the email that you received, that's fine. I'd like to keep his name privately now for this meeting as far as identifying him. Uh, just so, you know, I don't want to disclose his name this one moment.
Then perhaps we just won't put it in. We don't really need to read it into the minutes then. We'll just let it stand on its own. If you'd like to come in and, and speak to us, you can.
Yes.
Thanks.
I, I haven't had a chance to read that. I, I got it shortly before this meeting tonight, so I don't know the entire content of it, but um. Nevertheless, okay. All right, um. I, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Well, so, so it's about, um, I'm. Don't, or, can you give that, when, when you come? Or, well, you don't got that. So you know, on a voice, you have to, you have to not stop moving the mirrors, when, when not addressed one. Oh, and nothing, my, I didn't have a.
So. And we didn't address that, and thank you for bringing that up. And that is a concern, obviously. That has come up before this board uh, in the past several times. And as a matter of fact, the case in question, we can't, again, this may sound, um. Uh, this may not be the answer you want to hear, but because of pending litigation, there's not a lot we can go into in terms of specifics on this particular case. Uh, but there is a case before the court uh, tomorrow morning, I believe. So in order to, again, not jeopardize our position, I'll reserve, I think we should reserve further comment on that. It, it's, it's not being swept under the rug, I assure you. So stay tuned uh, on that, uh, that's on uh, Thursday, correct? Okay. Uh, yes, ma'am.
And I guess. Analysts over today. The working of the township, we can, we were proactive. And the idea is, when we're in our township, we can, oh, we don't worry. So almost hired, so they want to go out and we're setting the. Right now, we can now, I have been told, we are not proactive, you're free. We're dependent on president to snitch or talk or turn their neighbors on the other. A lot of our presidents felt no concern. And I think the neighbors say, I not even somebody out on the road. Whether it's one day a week, two days a week, three days a week, looking for things that need to be addressed before they turn into. A bigger fault. And I want to see.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am. So that might be something we uh, look at in a little bit more detail, Mr. McCarthy. Okay, and Mr. Wake, uh, Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Higgins, I apologize. Okay. Yes, sir.
Real quickly, to get back on Chief's say. Uh, that is accurate, or appears to be accurate, um. And there's a, a lot of great, it goes under on run road. Get a wrong. I think his property is part of that, but uh, my entire creek has been bug out and disrupted. And I have some concern about the natural flow of runoff going under the road, it's having the fact. The, and the structural integrity and bridge, um. Because there's a ton of water that pours down through there on the, during that rains. Uh. It's concerned and. And there's been a permit, you know, everything's good, you know, it's great. But it's, it's the vision and concern.
Did you say that he's been digging inside the streamline?
Yes.
In, in the waterway itself? Hey, Chief, this will be the Chief Wright. That's Army Corps, should be, yes.
If there's no, if there's no license or any kind of a permit from Army Corps. We should alert Army Corps that this is going on, along with O E P A.
Better way of getting your attention. Now, we tried to call him, not on this specific instance, it was the last time. He was taking him breathing, um, but.
Because he can build something, he has a pretty, they work with us.
Army, Army Corps said that, all right. Let's talk to Wenstrips Office too, Chief.
Well, pig.
I, I will, I will tell you, though, that pigs are usually the first line of irritation. Anytime I see a developer like this, that gets, or a builder like this, that gets told no, the first thing they say they're going to get are pigs. Either that, or they're going to do porn. It's, it's either one of those two things. I apologize for my language, but that's what they, that's what they always say. But it's also sitting right, again, Chief Wright, they're, they're also sitting next to Waterway. And agricultural runoff is O E P, is O E P A's Bailey Wick. So. Perhaps we should have a conversation with Wenstrips Office to call Army Corps and get the dominoes rolling here.
Absolutely. And Mr. Kohler perhaps could also.
And the Bradbury, all kinds of dumping, all kinds of the nine one three, three one three years, you know, that are great. And it keeps them doing it. So don't get your hopes up, because that will bring best, people. And they don't do much, so don't get your hopes up.
Well, well, this may be, this may be something that we shouldn't say on radio here. So watch out, here it comes. You remember Jim Bunning? Jim Bunning also used to start off with the best, the best batter, and he'd throw a baseball right at his zero hole. Maybe if Army Corps of Engineers shows up, because Brad Wenstrips said, get your ass into that creek. Maybe if Army Corps of Engineers shows up because Brad One Strip said, get your ass into that creek. Maybe they'll get a different response. I mean, we had the same situation when we were talking about two hundred thousand gallons of waste that went into the the nine mile creek. And when um the Lieutenant Governor's Office called and said, oh, EPA, get your butt back in that creek, they got back in the creek. So I I think I think we need to scream. We'll call, we'll get a hold of, you know, we can get a hold of J D Vance's office. We'll get a hold of heck, Sherrod Brown's office. That's how, that's how far I'll go. I'll talk to Sherrod Brown's office. That's, that's saying something right there. But I think that's what we should do. And and, you know, if Army Corps won't act, then what are, you know, what good are they then? So we'll work together on that.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Kohler, I'd like to ask you to take a look too. If there are any erosion issues that could jeopardize the foundation of the roadway in some way, obviously, that's a potential concern. And there is actually some uh slope there that there, there's some access that's been gained to the roadway uh to that parcel that may or may not be uh permissible. But there it, the slope is rather dangerous, but there is truck traffic going over that um access road or whatever you want to call it that's been created down into that into that property. It looks rather dangerous to me. So that might be something that we look at as well, in addition to the erosion issue. Uh, Chief, that might be something that could end up being potentially a serious uh point of injury for people that are working on that property. If you have a, you know, work truck tips over, that's a steep slope. And there are some folks that are going to get hurt that are in that truck and perhaps even the folks even down downstream from that. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for for your very helpful comments. Thank you so much. Uh, Chief Wright?
I have several items, but I will be brief. Um, this past Saturday, we conducted a live um training fire exercise in Ohio Township on Lyndale Nicholsville Road. So special thanks to Lyndale Auto for donating the house to us for training. Um, Fisher Homes for donating a significant amount of lumber to us that we needed for the project um to be compliant with our permits and to ultimately burn up. So I was was thrilled to not have to spend um fire department funds to do that. Um, our our folks worked diligently for a couple of weeks to get the house ready and in a condition and we were able to get thirteen burns out of the structure before we let it go. So it was a great training day. Um, we had participation from several of our members into Richmond, Monroe, and even some folks from Stonewick. Um, and also thanks to the service department, even though it was in Ohio Township, our service department helped us out with uh road closed signs um and working through with the engineer's office for a permitted closure. John's folks helped us out with the signage and so the engineer's office didn't have to bring in their people on overtime on Saturday. So they dropped stuff off on Friday for us to have for Saturday. Uh, Halloween activities? So we coordinated with Police Department and Chief Brockerman um so that we tried to cover as much of the township area as we could with police and fire units um during trick or treat to pass out candy. So I don't know if any major issues has occurred that night. But we did submit another grant this week to the State Fire Marshal's Office of Ohio Marks for some additional radio equipment. Still pushing hard to hit my hundred thousand mark for the year. But we'll see.
So at the December meeting, are we going to just pass a hat?
Um, the last brief thing is, you know, with the the time change last weekend, it's kind of the old added changer clocks, changer smoke detector batteries. Um, it's obviously much more complex than it used to be. Um, so in the late eighties, the building code changed, requiring hardwired smoke detectors in a lot of houses, so they're not the the same traditional. They all still have battery backups. Um, there are some detectors out now that have a ten year sealed battery that you can't change. Um, and all the hardwired ones are are manufacturer specific. So if anybody has questions or needs or is just isn't sure, then call the fire department. We're happy to come out, take a look. We have some limitations, um, some of the hardwired. You know, if they have to be wired to a an electrical connector, we can't do the wiring because we're not electricians. But if the right ones, it's just a swap, we can help, provided we can reach the detectors. Um, our ladders aren't quite conducive for being in in people's homes and nice floors. We don't have A frame ladders, but we'll do what we can to help. Also, with the time change, it's getting dark a little bit earlier, so um, we do make and and sell reflective address signs. I know it's a huge help for our staff, uh, Police Department, Service Department, they have out pizza delivery drivers or whoever. So that is on the township website with the order form um that can be submitted directly to our our person that takes care of of doing it. We charge twenty dollars. That's just for the cost of the sign. We don't make anything off of it. Um, the last thing is CPR classes. Our next coming, next up class is December second. I know we've been contacted by one individual interested in it. Thirty dollars a class. Our last class last September was canceled because we had no interest in it. We had nobody that that had reached out, signed up. There is some information on the website with contact information. So we'll work to to put that on a social media, but there's just not been a lot of interest in it here locally.
Chief, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chief, and I think that that is an opportunity for us to get at blast out on our uh social media. I think obviously the benefits of knowing CPR are widely known at this point, but yeah, the more we advertise it, the more uh en- enrollees will have, I think. So uh, so if there is a senior citizen or any of the resident that needs help changing a battery, they can call and we'll advise them or assist them as we can. Okay, terrific. Mr. Kohler?
We had uh, on the sign, we received a pretty sizable grant that will help replace some of the signage along some of our roadways, um, which is, you know, I was going to say the township, about almost fifty thousand dollars, so that's a big plus. And the roads, some of your heavier traveled roads will have much larger signage because of that grant. Um, and it will be to O dot standards, so.
So let me ask you a question.
Plus.
So part of that signage, would you say that that has to do with public safety?
Absolutely.
And it would make it so that the fire department can get to your street that much faster, wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
How much do you need to get to a hundred thousand?
Four links, seven or eight thousand shots.
Can you give him ten miles? I I've just tried, in the interest of being of sharing and sharing alike.
I guess. You can have seven thousand of them.
Could you help a brother out?
He can have seven, he can have eight thousand dollars for a sign.
Then we won't have to pass the hat into in December, guys. Unfortunately, Tim, that's going to have to go on in uh in Chief Wright's uh review. So now we're going to have to give him a raise because he hit the hundred thousand.
Thanks.
Yeah, he does.
And you got a nice size grant as well to hire some new employees.
We'll get back to you, John. Geez, come on.
Sorry, John.
No, you're right. It uh we uh what else? We had the five trees that I promised to plant on Pond Run. Plant World donated those to us, so you want to take those too?
No. I I don't think trees could help him out. I don't think it will.
But.
Who who was that, John, that that donated that?
Uh, Plant World.
Is that the place up on Bethel and New Richmond?
Uh, no, it's.
Oh, okay.
It's on one of my five.
Okay, well, that's terrific. Okay.
Those have been planted. And then we also um the grant that uh the Parks Committee applied for and and got um with the shade structures for around the playground area um on the benches, we got those installed and they're they're there. We needed them a couple of days this week.
Yeah, nice.
And we've had sun this week, so that's good.
That's.
Perfect time.
Let's keep that sun rolling all through the winter.
There you go. Very good. Good job.
I do have to say on that sign grant, uh Laura and Doug worked really hard on that, getting that together, so that was, that was a big feat.
Doug, Doug? You you worked, you worked on the sign? Oh, Doug in the server. Oh, okay, okay. Another Doug, okay.
He's my side guy.
Okay, gotcha. Terrific. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, Mr. Dresser.
Update on parks, uh, again, work day this Saturday from nine AM to one PM, uh, meeting at the Learning Center. Uh, we'll have some volunteers from UC as usual and from the community, uh, just doing some bases removal. Uh, we'll have a couple of folks cleaning up a few things over at the nature park and then over at Lucas Corner Park. And uh, again, pro park dedication, ribbon cutting, four PM on Friday. It's likely what is going to cooperate, so uh, should be uh good for that. Uh, some other things out of the Parks Committee meeting, uh, this Christmas tree lighting event is coming up on December seventh from Sunday at PM. We do have a acapella group from West Claremont High School. Um, you know, we'll have little craft activity for kids and hot chocolate and tree cock. So be a good event. We got a choir for that. We'll start getting circulated on social media. Um, you know, we've had several uh Eagle Scout projects, uh, some scouts stepping up, meeting a project for their uh Eagle Scout. Uh, we could have uh one that stepped forward. She presented Monday night at the Parks Meeting. Um, it's to uh build a free little library to put at uh Lucas Corner Park. I don't know if you've seen those in communities. It's like a little structure with folks in class school. People can leave books, borrow books, that type of thing. So um, we support it, but we want, you know, a couple of days before this, we just wanted to mention it to the board members, just, you know, make sure there aren't any objections to that. Um, ideas as far as placement would go would be uh near the playground. Um, without a good spot, maybe uh uh where you're, if you walk in front of the parking lot on that main paved path, then you have the small path that goes towards the picnic row. There's kind of a bend there by that one bench. We were thinking that might be a good spot for it. Um, but we thought it'd be a good uh, a good thing for especially kid, uh, parents have their kids playing at the playground, they they grab a book and, you know. So um any objections for that?
Very novel, I.
Great idea.
Word well chosen, very novel.
Yeah.
But I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, we we thought it was great too, so I think it'll be a nice little addition there. And um, and just later in the uh uh agenda, um, Tim and Eddie have been working on state capital grant. Um, so anyway, we just wanted to, you know, did bring that up. Uh, you know, in Monday's meeting and the Parks Committee supports, wholly supports that. I mean, there is an element in the Parks Master Plan, uh, you know, for the more, so. That's all I got.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug, as always.
We turned in the um, the application on the third, right? Um, do we, we put um letters of recommended or letters of support into it? You know, they can also do a letter of support. We could send it in a little late, but they, we could parse them off as an independent group and have yet another letter of support. Doesn't hurt. So if you want to draft something, if you want me to draft something, I don't care. We can get it over to Doug.
Terrific. I requested uh our state representative's support of that as well. All right, wonderful. Community development? Mr. McCarthy?
So uh, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow afternoon is the kickoff meeting for the uh C N U grant that we were awarded in conjunction with Davia Township. So our partner project to craft a design plan for the Amelia neighborhood will be kind of underway tomorrow. We will get more information to you next month regarding uh just logistics, uh, general timelines and and matching requirements and things to that effect, but it's a it's generally valued at over a hundred thousand dollars as as the project goes. We were one of four, we were basically one of four projects chosen. There were twelve total applications in the greater Cincinnati area as well. And so there will be a major conference mid-year next year as well to kind of showcase these different projects, but I can send more information to um regarding some of the other projects that have gone through. There's some in Savannah, um Charleston, places like that around the country that have that have kind of gone through the process, but it's a really unique opportunity, pretty good stuff, so um, there'll be more on that to come in the next month. Then uh, we're also working on the goal setting and land use plan implementation. Uh, the project we have upcoming here is uh it's the zoning and regulations for solar and wind, that sort of thing. So we're going to be crafting um, basically an RFP just to solicit some responses from consultants to see if we can get uh a really properly scoped set of regulations for solar, uh, both residential, commercial, and utility scale as well as wind as well. So those were pretty high priorities in the goal setting, and they were also really high priorities in the land use plan as well. So hopefully we'll have some good news on that front as well coming up.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Just just to reiterate, I think that part of the the purpose of that was just to make sure that we were were able to kind of wrap our, wrap our hands around what could be coming down, you know, down the pipeline as far as those projects go. I know that there's a lot of capital kind of pushing those things along. We just want to make sure that we're out front as, you know, instead of reacting to those sorts of things.
Excellent. All right, now, Mr. Williams?
All right, um, just to add one thing, but before that, just a quick um correction, Mr. Dressy. We initially had hoped that the um ribbon cutting would be four o'clock on Friday. Um, but we had a little bit of a scheduling issue, so we've moved it to four thirty, moved it back by thirty minutes, so um and yeah, and and we'll get that out. I think it's already on our website that way and maybe some of our social media, but uh yeah, just a a minor change there. Uh, I just wanted to update the board and and the public. Uh, as you know, we've been on a year long process of uh looking at our facilities. And we contracted after a a very extensive uh search um with Branstad or Carroll Engineering and Architecture Firm to help us through that process. Uh, they've been making great progress um along the way and uh they're now to a point uh where they've been able to scope out um really what we have and what our potential needs would be um as in the future for this township. Um, as as you recall, we have a steering committee um that consists of our department heads. Um, it also has Mr. Kelly as the chairman of it and three of our residents in the community um that have been involved. That committee will be meeting um with Branstad or Carroll sometime in early to mid-December um to uh see sort of their initial thoughts on um on this and uh start vetting that process um so that we can hopefully eventually get to a report uh that the uh the 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 full trustees board can dig into and then start a public engagement process. As you recall, one of the reasons that we highly recommended Branstad or Carroll, we being the uh the entire committee was that they were very good on public engagement. Felt like it was a very important, critical part of that. Also, um, to understand what funding mechanisms were out there. Um, and they had a track record in doing that with a number of other communities in Ohio and and Kentucky and other places as well. They work Tennessee and um Texas now as well. So um, we 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 hope that this uh will continue, the process will continue. Um, and then we'll come up with some good results and and we'll have an opportunity, if not by the end of this year, at least um early in January, for the Board of Trustees to have that document and really start tearing into it and seeing where we're at on it. But again, um, the the progress has been very good and um, I think that I can speak for all of the people on the committee that we've been very pleased with the work so far. Now, Chief Wright and Chief Brockerman, um, and I met last week with them just to kind of go over some preliminary things because public safety is such a critical part and such the major part of this facility analysis. Um, and they've really done a pretty good job. Um, and that's really all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and Mr. Williams, were we, will we be able to get that out about the um the Grove Park rededication on social media?
It it's on social media already. Yes, sir. Um, and as as on our website as well, and we reached out to all the HOAs um within that area of Grove Park, um, to invite them, to let them know about it, to get it out to their residents and to invite them out there. I mean, just a note on that, uh, for the, for those in the audience that uh it's uh it's named after, I guess, Ro- Robert Grove, is that correct, Debbie? Um, who was a former mayor of Amelia and uh he's ninety-nine and uh he and his daughter, uh, Ms. Keen, uh, will be at the, at the uh ribbon cutting, so that's really neat and uh Ms. Shy will also be uh talking a little bit about uh him as part of that. So we're really excited about that. It's it's sort of neat to be able to bring back someone that the park was originally dedicated to um and still have him there so that he can appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Very well. Moving on to old business.
Dr. Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I did think one more thing with Michelle Ballside not being here. Um, just wanted to let you guys know the Amelia Christmas Parade is scheduled for December tenth at two o'clock. So I know we we met early in December. Um, both townships to go over that, just so it was on your guys' radar because it should occur before our next trustees meeting.
The tenth?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be blasting that out on our social media webs and so forth, right? Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay, the, therefore moving forward to old business.
All right. Um, so I trustee Nick Kelly requests a motion to approve resolution two zero two three dash zero three six, a motion correcting the recorded minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three board Of trustee meeting, meetings to ensure they are reflective of the original motion and subsequent board decisions. Or discussions, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll second that and then we'll have a discussion, I suppose.
My only problem is I just don't see how changing minutes changes the heart of the problem. There's, you know, again, Nick, there's no, I'm not There's no issue I don't, I don't feel with the, the study and what's been done. I'm just simply make, I want to make sure That we do it correctly. And I think that it predates, I, I think the problem's not the minutes. The problem is the motion and that it was changed. And so I think that's the heart of it. Whether, you know, we want to debate that further, that's, that's fine, but I think that's really The gist of it, not the minutes change.
Well, it may come down to, uh, I guess the fact that
Everything okay outside?
I think they're just going for the cake and ice.
Okay. Everything's fantastic outside then. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay. We, uh, you know, I think we did our due diligence with it. Uh, it was a clarification of the scope, not a major amendment and I'm personally fine with it and I want to make sure that the minutes that we have on record are reflective of the discussion and the motion that was passed.
I, I think it, I think that it does. I think that what you put into the resolution does reflect the discussion that happened. But I, I don't think that it addresses the issue that the state auditor actually has. And that's really what we, we, we need to be focused on is making sure that that's what the state auditor needs us to do In order to make it, make it work for their purposes. And I'm, I'm just not sure that changing the minutes actually gets that.
So I think at first, my opinion, uh, just my opinion, the fir- a first step in the direction um going forward would be just to, to, to clarify the minutes. And I think that's really all we're asking for here. Shall we read the resolution as part of discussion or?
That's up to you. You have to. I mean, that's your, your pleasure.
Okay, I, I bring it up only in part because gentleman asked. I'm happy to do that or Mr. Kelly could do it.
Oh, yeah, I can do it. I don't know. It's in here somewhere.
When I, when I introduced the, the meeting on my fifth year life, well, when I When I listened to the mouth to the end, I knew Nick, he said he read the motion And I didn't catch it, but he stated, and then he continued to talk about doing the other, the other part of the scope down the road. And that's what I typed.
That's okay.
And that's what
And I listened to it obviously before this meeting fairly carefully and it was, and, and I, I did mention that we could always do that, right? And as a, as another step, but for the time being, we wanted to approve the contract. I got you.
But regardless of the minutes, you had conversations with the audit as well. And, and it didn't cert, it didn't revolve around the discussion of the minutes. It revolved around the motion.
Right, the motion with the contract.
So I mean, we can change the minutes all we want. We still have the problem with the state auditor.
I, I think that's a separate issue.
I, I agree, Ms. I was Freeman. I agree. I think all we're doing right now with this is requesting a clarification of the minutes.
For what purpose? If it doesn't.
Uh, well, we, I think we were obligated to set the record straight. The written, the, the written record.
Yeah, I think they should, everything should be accurate or reflective of the motion.
If you want to change what you said, make a resolution that says X Y.
So here we go.
That's, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So Uh, so this is resolution number two zero two three dash zero three six. Bear with me. Resolution Amending the minutes in part from the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three virtual and in-person meeting and to correct the record of proceed, uh, of proceedings of the Pierce Township Board of Trustees, whereas It has recently come to the attention of the board of trustees that the minutes prepared for the meeting of the board, uh, of the board On July twelfth, twenty twenty-three and approved by this board contain a clerical error That the minutes uh inadvertently contain an inaccurate description of the entire transaction of events related to the Uh, to uh trustee Kelly's motion to approve a letter of engagement with Flagel Huber Flagel CPA to perform a forensic audit related to internet fraud detection And avoidance in providing uh advice on policy development on Pierce Township internal controls and whereas R C Uh, dot one two one dot two two, R C dot one four nine dot four three and R C dot three oh five dot one zero Collectively require the board to maintain a full and accurate description of meeting minutes, meeting minutes so must allow the public To appreciate the rationale behind the board's decision and minutes are inadequate when containing inaccuracies that are not correct. The board now descri- uh desires to approve amended minutes from the July twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting And correct the record of proceedings. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of trustees in Pierce Township Claremont County, Ohio By at least a majority of all board members present casting a vote. Section one to approve amended minutes in part for the July twelfth, twenty twenty-three virtual and in-person meeting as follows. Upon motion, trustee Kelly moved to approve an engagement letter with Flagel Huber Flagel CPA to perform a forensic audit related to internet fraud detection and avoidance And for advice on policy development of internal controls. Discussion occurred amongst the board Regarding the scope of services that would provide, that would be provided by Flagel Huber Flagel CPA and whether services could be extended at a future time After the board discussed that contract. The, the best interest of the township and its taxpayers and fraud coverage, the scope of services were agreed to by the board. The board further discussed the uh option of broadening the scope of work to other departments following the satisfaction of the initial contract terms. Section two, to correct the record of proceedings to reflect the minutes as amended herein. Section three, that the clerk shall cause A copy of this resolution be delivered and posted on the Pierce Township website To supplement the previously posted minutes from the July twelfth, twenty twenty-three virtual and in-person meeting Of the Pierce Township Board of Trustees. Section four, that is hereby found and determined That all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the passage of the resolution were taken in an open meeting of this board And that all deliberations of this board and any Is there a page two? Oh. Uh, of, and we're almost there. Of its committees that resulted in such formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including one two one point two two Of the Ohio Revised Code. Section five, that the township pursuant to R C Dot five oh four dot one zero by at least two thirds of vote Uh, hereby dispenses with the requirement that this resolution be read on two separate days and hereby Authorizes an adoption, authorizes the adoption Of the resolution upon its first reading. That this resolution shall be effective at the earliest date allowed by law.
I, I will say this is in, we amended this. This is in a, a, a version of this because we removed the term clerical error from there. That, that should not have been included in this resolution. So if you pass that this evening, I would just pass as amended the removal of that term.
Okay, so the, the removal of the term uh clerical error would be the only uh difference as to what I read. As to what we're approving this evening.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I still don't understand how that addresses the state auditor's Demands.
I don't, I don't think the goal is to address the state auditor's demands. It's just to clarify the meet, the minutes so that they're
But that's, that's fine, but when are we going to address the auditor's issues?
Uh, that's not part of, that's not where we are in the agenda. Um, so we're
Is there something on the agenda where we do address the auditor's concerns?
Not to my knowledge. This, this request is for just The aforementioned request to correct the written record. That's all we're asking for. Not having any further discussions as a part of this, or as far as I know, anywhere in the agenda regarding the topic that you brought up.
I'm still confused. Are we ever going to address The auditor's concerns?
I think that should be something that maybe we discuss separately because I, I'm not even really aware of what they're So
This is, I mean, Debbie, you, you talked to the auditor. I did not.
But what was approved that the trustees made? And what was signed for two different things? And that's what my concerns are was with the contract. Because Tim got, you received an amendment. You received an amendment coming out of my day of mission. So amended to more But, but that's how, but what you said was not what was in the package. What was approved that didn't come through?
But what Flagel, you said it was a clarification, but yet Flagel calls it an amendment.
Yeah.
This is their work. You know, this is what the auditor will flag when we get on. I guess I get nervous when we pass something in a meeting and we just now had an issue where The words weren't, we amended something and we just, we're going to vote on it. And we, we just had that, we almost had that fumble now. And I, I just, I don't think we want to go down the path of passing motions or at least the perception That we're going to pass motions and we'll decide whether or not it's a meaningful change, but we'll change it after the fact. This would be considered a, a, a change order And should be brought even just back to the board for clarification. And, and that's kind of my view, but I, 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 I will be quiet now and we can take the bus.
So once again, this is simply a resolution correcting the written record, nothing more And nothing less. Okay, is there any further discussion? So that is not part of this motion?
It's not, it's not what the, the motion is though for this and I, and we can look further into that, you know, as far as it being a clarification or not. I under, I do understand what you're saying and I'm not Discrediting it, but this motion is just to clarify to make sure. I mean, I understand, but And it's something we can look into obviously separately, but this is to clarify that the minutes are accurately reflective of the motion that was passed.
You guys didn't approve, which I don't know if it's going to pay for not, but I can say to this. You change one word in the United States Constitution, it can change the whole state of democracy. So one word which changed and then Contract extension. You approved, you had approved it. So that has to be addressed.
Again, thank you to echo what Mr. Kelly said. That is not part of what we're doing at this moment. That's not the, the uh motion on the table. With, that is something that we are going to discuss further in the future. Yes. Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion before we conclude?
Yeah, the motion was made with the amendment that we discussed, which was the removal of the term.
So I made the motion and Dr. Campbell is second.
We are amending your motion, correct?
The motion Ending the motion, the motion was for the amended resolution, which was the removal of the term clerical.
That is correct.
So the motion is saying we're going to, I want to get it right. The, the motion is going to say that we are amending the resolution.
We're passing the resolution as amended with the removal of the term clerical.
Full text of the resolution to be provided and made of record. Motion. We're not doing this again. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for the clarification.
All right, let me get back to that. Yes, by all means.
Just heard back from Wenstrup's office. They want us to talk to him in the morning. So, Craig?
Really good. All right. Uh, let me get back to the agenda here. It's called my favorite topic.
Oh, sorry. I think I buried it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Your business.
Yeah, it, it, by, by passing it, we dispensed it with a second reading.
All right. Very well. Your business, Mrs. Why?
Request conversion approval of the payment of the bills for the month of September in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and given the word set.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
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 I pressed the motion for approval of the payment of pick The month of September in the amount of three thousand five hundred and eighty-one.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Grayman?
Yep.
Mr. Cavalli?
Yes.
I pressed the motion for approval of payment of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars on the Senate To declare a county treasure for nine eleven communications in twenty twenty-two. And I did hear it heard down, um, service department for nine one, nine one one recalls is two hundred ninety-six Dollars and thirteen cents. Um, for fire EMS was um sixteen thousand, it's been two forty-eight. And for the big department, thirty-one thousand, seven eighty-five forty. Which shows in forty-eight thousand. And that's for twenty twenty-two, nine one one calls.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli?
Yes. Sir Williams?
Um, yes, Administrator Williams requests a motion to approve a service agreement with Alta Fiber for internet services at two hundred megabytes at a monthly rate of seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Increased bandwidth is recommended by our T advisor, C S M Incorporated. Current speed we have is forty megabytes at a cost of three fifty a month. Um, the cost will be ser- um shared among, uh, the cost of the service will be shared among all the operating departments. There is a memo in your packet um explaining that uh the forty megabytes is uh Um, woefully too slow to be able to service um the needs of the uh, of the township right now, particularly heavy users of uh Of that like the police department. So their recommendation is that at a fair minimum, we should increase it to the two hundred megabytes. Um, and we recommend that.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Grayman?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli?
Yes. Sir Williams?
Yes, Administrator Williams requests a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero, expressing support For the state of Ohio Capitol Bill Grant Application for a Veterans and Public Safety Memorial and adjoining shelter at Locust Corner Park. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And the other thing I would add that it is one hell of an application. So well, well done, guys. Good job.
Um, chief, Colonel Brockman?
This one, uh, he's already made by
Yeah.
Oh, part of you included that. Okay.
He'd like it, but we're not going to give it to him.
Chief Wright?
I request a motion to approve four-year preventative maintenance and testing pro-care agreement with Striker For two of our power cots and load systems with an annual payment of one thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for a four-year total of six thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Cav?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, thank you, chief. Um, Mr. Caller?
I request a motion To approve the payment of thirty-two thousand
I request a motion to approve the payment of thirty two thousand six hundred and seventy two dollars and thirty cents to Clermont County Engineer for the final payment for the twenty twenty three road resurfacing program. The total amount was reduced by the balance left on the original purchase order of three thousand five hundred and sixty eight dollars for a total invoice amount of thirty six thousand two hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents.
Make the motion.
Seconded.
Um, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Caller.
I request a motion to appoint Mr. Troy Baker as a maintenance worker for with the service department at the starting rate of twenty six dollars per hour per the proposed new pay plan, starting date of November thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli.
Yes.
We'll start with that.
Yep.
It's standard.
Yep. Stay retired.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caller, Mr. McCarthy.
Community Development and Planning Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to appoint an applicant from the foregoing list to serve the remainder of the vacated alternate zoning commission position, serving a term ending, uh, May thirty first, twenty twenty four. That list is on page thirty six of your packet and includes Ms. Kristen Cannon, Mr. David Frick and Ms. Mr. Steve Newcomb. So the, um, this, this vacancy was created, uh, when Ms. Benzinger was appointed to a regular term.
So we have Ms. Cannon on white, Ms. Cannon. Um, scroll down. Uh, she was our part timers, I recall.
That's correct.
Yeah, uh, uh, we have Ms. LaShawn. And Mr. Freaky. And Ms. Freaky. And no, wait, Mr. Freaky, okay. Mr. Newcomb, all right.
I would like to nominate Kristen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Mr. McCarthy.
Okay. So the the next, the next three items pertain to thirty three oh six Cole Road, so there's going to be two nuisances and one zoning violation associated. So I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh three one to declare a nuisance in accordance with O R C section five oh five dot eight six regarding the removal, repair, or securance of an insecure or unsafe building or structure. This pertains to the structure located at thirty three oh six Cole Road, which has been vacant for some time. Uh, we've also, in your packets, you'll have a letter from the fire department, uh, Chief Craig Wright as well pertaining to that particular structure.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Uh, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh three two to declare a nuisance in accordance with O R C five oh five eight seven. Overgrowth and vegetation, including vegetative debris pertaining to the vegetation and debris located at thirty three oh six Cole Road.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh three three to take enforcement action regarding the zoning violations for an unpermitted use, construction contracting, under four point oh three, and a camping trailer habitation per eleven point oh nine regarding the property located at thirty three oh six Cole Road.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So the ne, the next two are also grouped together, one is a zoning violation and the other pertains to junk motor vehicles and scrap on site. Community Development and Planning Director Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh oh three four to take enforcement action regarding an unpermitted use classified as automotive wrecking salvage or junk facilities in the G B zone per five point oh four E pertaining to the properties located at thirteen thirty three and thirteen thirty one, State Route one twenty five, Pierce Township, Ohio. For reference, this is Beachmont, Beachmont towing.
And to to be clear, I'm sure, I so I already know the answer, but for everybody else, you know, you've 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 given ample opportunity to clean this stuff up before it gets here, there's been a lot of communication going on, right?
We we have, and, um, Mr. Higgins has worked diligently on this as well, they've made some progress, but it it it's it's kind of ground to a halt significantly.
I'll make your turn, Nick.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh three five to declare a nuisance in accordance with O R C section five oh five dot eight seven one to declare a nuisance in, I'm sorry, first pertaining to the removal of junk vehicles on the property located at thirteen thirty three and thirteen thirty one, State Route one twenty five, Pierce Township, Ohio.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, is there any other new business to come before the board?
No, but I just got an email from, uh, Senator Vance's office, they want to have a conversation with us in the morning.
That's, that's, that's service.
I was u, I was utilizing my time, you said you wanted action, I I felt, I mean, this is. I'm doing, just trying to do my job.
You paid part of his salary. All of our salaries. Good job, Mr. Freeman, that's much appreciated, thank you, any other new business? All right, if not, I request a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio revise code section one two one dot two two G three to discuss imminent or pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Cav.
Yes.
Yes. I request a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio revise code, section one two one dot two two G one to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or other compensation of a public, of a public employee.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Uh, we don't know if we're going to take any further action after we return out of executive session, that always is a possibility. Thank you to everyone who's attended.
Executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Roll call.
Wait a minute.
We did that one too quick.